Good afternoon, Dixie State. We're so happy to have you as we have this virtual town meeting for our students on campus and off and wherever you might find yourself today. My name is Jordan Sharp. I'm the Vice President of Marketing and Communication here at Dixie State. Due to COVID-19, all of our jobs, our schooling, our lives have been altered drastically, but it's our goal to provide as much direction and answers and support as we possibly can in this extremely fluid situation that we all find ourselves in. In that spirit, we're holding this Town Hall meeting today so that we can connect with you the best way we can, safely hear from you, and just make sure that there's nothing that you're worried about that we're not aware of. So let me share with you briefly how this meeting will go today. We would like to keep it to around an hour if we could. We have been collecting your questions for the last week, and we appreciate those that took time to respond to our call for questions because I promise you won't be the only one that has that question. We've organized and grouped the questions, so if you don't hear yours, it might be similar to another question that we received. You will also be able to ask questions during this meeting, so you'll need to log into your YouTube account, and if you don't have one, you can hurry and create one, but I'm sure most of you do. Log into that, and we encourage you to ask those questions early on because then we can process those and make sure that we get those in a timely manner. But just know, if we don't get to all of your questions, we will do our very, very best to reach out to each one of you who asked a question and follow up with you the best that we can. This Town Hall meeting will also be available after the fact. It'll be recorded, and you can go to the same link and find it as soon as this meeting is over. Now, I would love to introduce our panel here for you, those who have come prepared to answer your questions. First of all, I'd like to introduce to you Dixie State President Richard Biff Williams. We have Vice President of Administrative Affairs Paul Morris. We have Associate Provost for Academic Success Sarah Vandermark, Assistant Vice President and Dean of Students Dell Beatty. Apart from these fine folks we have on our panel here, we have some folks waiting in the wings, those that might have questions or answers to questions that you have. So just so you know, we have people from the Health and Wellness Center, financial aid and scholarships, and also about commencement. So any of those questions that we can answer the best we can as well today. So with that, we would like to begin. We'll first open up this meeting by hearing some words from our very own President, Richard Biff Williams, and after that, we will get to your questions. Thanks again for joining us.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. As Jordan mentioned, this Town Hall meeting is for you. Over the last several weeks, we've watched as you have really stepped up and helped us ameliorate the different issues that have come forward with the COVID global pandemic. We're very proud of you. We hear from you often, but we wanted to come together with a group of panelists and have themed questions so that we can answer your questions. Today's not the only day that you can ask questions. We hope that you'll send your questions to us throughout your time. If you have concerns with faculty or with staff or with next fall, we hope that you'll immediately get those questions to us, and we'll get the answers to you as quickly as possible. But we wanted to put our faces out there and make sure that we are being responsive to your questions, and so today you'll hear a variety of different questions from your peers, and we'll try to answer those as quickly as possible. If your questions, as Jordan mentioned, do not get answered, we'll be here all summer until fall till we welcome you back to be able to answer those questions. So with that, we'll begin the Town Hall meeting.
Okay, President Williams, we'll have this first question go to you, and this was a common theme, so just know that. This is kind of a lot of questions combined together. But when do you think remote learning will end? And kind of follow up to that, how is the university approaching campus opening for the fall, and what types of contingency plans are being considered and planned for if we cannot open up as normal?
And that's a good question and probably the most popular question. When are we going to reopen, and how long will remote learning continue? As you know, we've announced that campus will remain in a remote learning throughout the semester, but we'll also remain remote learning through the summer. We wanted to make sure that we're keeping our students safe, our faculty and staff. We're also following the guidelines and directives of our governor. We're looking at federal guidelines as well as guidelines from our Southwest Public Health Office. I have the opportunity each Monday to meet with all the presidents in the state of Utah. We also get advice from the Utah System for Higher Education, and then I have an opportunity to meet with all the local mayors, the county commissioners, and hear what the climate is here in our environment. And so as we've looked at remote learning, we are making sure that we're making decisions that will keep you healthy and safe. We are planning on opening in the fall. We're planning on having face-to-face classes. That's what we're expecting to do, but on the event that we have to cancel again or go to remote learning, we do have contingencies plans in place. Our faculty, our deans, our staff are preparing for face-to-face classes, but in the event that we have an uptick in the virus spread, that we'll be able to immediately go to remote learning this fall. But for the meantime, we are planning on having face-to-face classes. We hope that you're getting registered. A lot of our students are, so plan on being here in the fall, and we will keep you apprised of any changes that might happen over the summer.
Great, thank you, President. Just to follow up to kind of opening and coming back, this will be for you, Dean Beatty. There's a specific question about the testing center for this upcoming semester in the summer. Will that be available to students in the summer?
Well, thank you so much for asking. First of all, I think you're going to hear a lot today, a two-word answer that says "it depends," right? Or maybe even a three-word answer, "we don't know," because we don't really know what the future is going to hold, of course. Right now, I know the testing center staff is ready. I actually spoke with the Director of Testing this morning, and he's anxious. Their employees are ready and willing and wanting to work, and so the testing center is ready for all of you and look forward to serving you. Right now, they are open for some testing. They've been doing some placement testing, although they're encouraging everyone to do the majority of their placement testing online if at all possible. They have done some professional testing for EMTs and other things through the Professional Testing Center, and then the Disability Resource Center has continued to use their testing capability and partnering with the testing center to make those tests available to those students even during this time. But I anticipate that we will be open during the summer for testing. We're hopeful. It'll probably be on how the social distancing guidelines are rolled out moving forward. For example, it might be that maybe we open on a sort of a soft opening in a few weeks where the testing center would be open and maintaining six or eight feet between those who are testing, so we would let fewer people into the center at once. But the anticipation is right now that we would like to be open, and we plan to, but again, it just depends.
Great. Along those same lines, here's another facility opening question, and we'll address this to you, Vice President Morris. Will Brookstop and other campus dining options be open for the summer semester as well?
Yes, great question, Jordan. Students may not know that we did not close on-campus student housing, so even now, we have about 225 students who are still living here on campus, and we do have some employees still working on campus every day. So to accommodate those employees and students, we have continued to run Brookstop over the last month, and we'll continue to operate that through the summer. We will either operate Brookstop or the Subway and market in the Gardner Center, but the answer to the question is yes. We will have food available on campus.
Great. So President Williams, we'll go back to you. We have a few questions around just fees and tuition and that sort of thing, and I'd like to get to those. The question here is, will there be reimbursements for tuition or fee costs for this past semester due to the changes we have experienced? And I know there's different fees for different things, but maybe we can address some of that. And is DSU moving forward with its planned tuition increase for the 2021 academic year?
Okay. And these are probably the most popular questions, and so I'll break it up into three groups: the tuition, the fees, and then tuition increase that we're considering for this next year. With the current tuition, this is a question that has come to me often. We have continued to deliver our coursework, and this is something that we're looking at, and what did we need to do with tuition? Tuition was collected. We have continued to deliver the classes. Most people have asked, isn't it cheaper if we go remote learning? And actually, because we weren't prepared for this initially, it actually is more expensive. And so those tuitions and fees that have been used are to deliver the education that you have. And so as we met as a council presence in the state of Utah, we realized that the tuition, we have delivered the education that we promised, and so tuition in the state of Utah will not be reimbursed at this time. When we look at student fees, and those are the fees that you have for mental health services, writing center, tutoring center, student government, et cetera, those too have been used to offer the service remotely, and so those won't be reimbursed as well. I do want to commend the student government. Usually their fees are for supporting events that you get to enjoy like D Week, which was last week, and we didn't get to enjoy those. They have created emergency grants for student aid, and so the money that they would have used for events, they have actually used to help you, the students. And so we're very proud that they would do that. Looking at individual course fees, many have asked, well, I had a course fee for a laboratory that was in person. A lot of those course fees have now been used to purchase technology or purchase mediums where the teacher that's teaching remotely can use those funds to teach the concepts to you in a remote environment, and so many of those have been used. There are some courses that will reimburse, but those are going to be on a case-by-case, and those faculty will contact the students directly. Considering a tuition increase for next year, as many of the students know from the tuition truth and tuition hearing, when we create our strategic plan five years ago, we looked at what are the resources we need to provide to our students, whether it's tutoring, new programs, faculty advising, any of the services that our students need to be successful. We were planning on each of the year, a 5% tuition increase, which is just a little over $100 a semester. As the legislature has awarded us different appropriations, we have, over time, backed off that 5%. Two years ago, we had a great legislative session. Our legislators recognized that we had tremendous need on our campus, and so we only had to raise tuition 3.5%. This last legislative session, again, our legislators recognized our growing institution. They also recognized that we're the most affordable university, four-year university in the state of Utah, and they want to maintain that. So we had a very good legislative session and received a healthy appropriation. Now, that appropriation allowed us to back off the 5% and then get approved a 3% tuition increase. Now, that 3% tuition increase comes from requests of students for additional faculty, advisors, financial aid counselors, those things that are necessary for you to be successful. And so we are continuing to plan on that 3%, which is about $70 a semester for our students. The current legislative appropriation that allowed us to back that off is currently on hold as the state looks at their financial situation. We might not receive those, but the tuition will remain at the approval of 3% that went through the truth and tuition with the students.
Great, thank you so much for that explanation. I know that was a lot of information there, and again, this is being recorded for anyone who needs to go back and review some of these answers. This next one will be for you, Dean Beatty. So this is coming from our seniors about to graduate and about to go out into the working world, and you know, they're not alone, and they're a little anxious about that. We've had a really great economy, and the job market's been great, and things have changed, and so this is their question. Is there any help the university will offer to student seniors who are graduating this year and have lost their employment opportunities due to COVID-19? What can we do on our end to help them?
Well, obviously, there is a lot of anxiety, and we, first of all, we know and understand how you must be feeling, and we're here to help you. As an institution, we have resources to help you, including wonderful resources in the Career Center. Earlier today, in preparation for this, I anticipated a question like this, and I was able to speak to Ally Threet, who's the Director of our Career and Internship Center. And it's interesting because right now, they're conducting appointments virtually, so help is available for you. If you are a student, whether you're a senior or another student and can use assistance, I would definitely reach out to them at career.dixie.edu because they are doing things like virtual resume review. They can do tips and helps in preparing you for interviews, as well as the networking opportunities that come in just searching for a job. In speaking today with Ally, she said, and I actually wrote it down here, there are a lot of businesses who are still hiring even right now during this worldwide pandemic. And so the key is finding out where those resources are and where those jobs are. One of the greatest things that she educated me about this morning was all of the Career Center directors from the public institutions in the state of Utah are networking together and actually relying on each other's resources. And she shared with me a story of two Dixie State students earlier this week who are at home with their families in Utah County, and they're looking for jobs, and they didn't know what to do, and they contacted our Career Center as they are students at Dixie State. And so Ally Threet was able to contact the Career Center at one of the major institutions in the Utah Valley area, and using their resources, that institution was then able to provide connections to Ally to pass to our students, and those students were able to then apply for those jobs and have interviews coming up. So it's exciting because of the networking opportunities that are there. Also, we continue to work with the Division of Workforce Services. That is a great resource for all students, and especially those who are graduating as seniors. And then also, on May the 12th, there's going to be a virtual career fair that is going to be statewide. All of the campuses will be partnering together. So again, if you go to career.dixie.edu, you'll find tremendous information there. It is unforeseen and uncertain times for all of us, but we're here to help you, for sure.
Great, thank you so much, Dean Beatty. Vice President Morris, this is a question that came up a few times. It's just a housekeeping item, but one that's important to students. We got this several times. They are asking, how do we sell back the textbooks or return rented textbooks that we acquired in this last semester, and when will the campus store be reopened? So that's a hot one right there, so thank you so much for any insight.
You bet. We will conduct a book buyback on campus and remotely. That book buyback will be held April 27th through May 1st. There's three ways you can go about either returning your rentals or selling books back to the campus store. One is an online book buyback option. You can simply go onto our campus stores website, go under the textbook area, and click the link for online buyback, and then follow the instructions that are there. The second option is drive-through buyback that will happen at the dock behind the Gardner Center. Now, that dock is located near the teardrop, the turnaround, in front of the Holland Building. You can just pull up to that dock, and one of our employees will come out and help you through the buyback process. For pedestrians, we will have a tent near the Holland Teardrop that you can walk your books up and sell the books back to the campus store as well. Now, the idea for having the book buyback outside is for social distancing and protection of all who would like to sell their books back and helping them make sure they don't get the COVID-19.
Great, thank you so much. Dr. Vandermark, this next question is for you, and the student is asking, for semesters in which classes are held remotely, will online fees be waived for classes that are typically designated as online? And maybe for some of our other students listening in, because there's a few questions this way, you know, there's fees for online, and then there's other types of fees, but the question here is, now that others have gone remote, will there be an online fee for those or vice versa? Will we be taking away online fees that were currently in place? So if you could just kind of work us through that, there is some question on the online fee, particularly for the summer.
All right, thank you, Jordan. The designated fees will stay the same. Therefore, if your class was already an online class, there are fees attached to those online classes. However, if your class was moved to remote learning, there are no fees attached to that, and that will be the same for the summer as well.
Great, thank you so much. There's a follow-up for you on that. Are finals being administered remotely?
Yes, good question. I'm hoping that all of your faculty have reached out to you and have discussed with you how they will be conducting their finals. Please check your Canvas, also check your Gmail as well, and they will be administered remotely, but again, this is a faculty conversation with each class that you're in. Also, we do have, as Dean Beatty said, any student who is needing accommodation, they can reach out to the Disability Resource Center. I do have the phone number. It's 435-879-4038. So any student who does need testing through Disability Resource Center, please reach out to them, and we will help to accommodate you.
Great, thank you so much. One more question for you, Dr. Vandermark. So the student is asking, what do I need to do if I want to be evaluated on a pass no credit scale instead of the traditional letter grade system? I think this is something really great that we've put into place to help certain students in certain situations, right? And we've also learned that that might not be the best thing to do for some students. So could you walk us through that and tell us some of the pros and cons of taking the pass no credit option?
Yes. There will be a lot more information on pass no credit available also on the website. There also was on the Dixie Instagram. Provost LaCourse had discussed pass no credit, so you can also find it there. There will be available for withdrawal deadlines. Has been changed to April 22nd at this time, so you do have a chance to still withdraw from your class. Hopefully, you are staying and attending and completing this spring semester. We do want you to please finish your classes. And then if there is a chance that you feel that you do need a pass no credit, that will be available as of April 27th. However, before making that decision, we recommend that you discuss this with your financial aid counselor and to call the financial aid office. We do not want anyone to have anything hinder them from receiving any sort of scholarship that they may have had or any sort of financial aid that they were receiving for this spring term. So that is very important that you reach out to your financial aid counselor. You also can discuss this with your academic advisor. They are available to you. They know all of the rules for each pass no credit. Depending on whether or not you're planning to go to graduate school, it could impact that as well. So we really want you to take this into consideration on whether this is a benefit for you or not. So those are basically the main things that you need to be thinking about for the pass no credit.
Thank you, and like you mentioned, there are additional resources online to kind of help people through that, but I think the main thing is if you, any doubt, reach out to your counselor, to your professor, to someone, and just make sure you're making that right decision. But what a great opportunity for those that need that this year. President Williams, back to you. This is a question, we have several like this, but we'll use this one as kind of the example. But we all know, we've done our best to move remotely. No one planned on this. The professors didn't plan on it, and they've done a fantastic job. We also know there are some growing pains, right? When something happens so quickly. So here's what one student says. "I have a teacher who has a very hard time teaching remotely, making the class much more difficult than it already was. The pass no credit option is not enough, as many graduates still won't accept it, graduate schools won't accept it. Is there anything else that can be done to help? Would you consider a 10% final grade boost at the end of the semester for such cases?" And again, there were other similar examples, just some maybe a little frustration between communication of students and professors, and just maybe address that a little bit. I know every case is different, but let's talk to that.
Okay. Well, if you're having any type of struggles with your class, the first thing that I would suggest that you do is go talk to the teacher and express to them and make sure you communicate with them the struggles that you're having. If any of our professors are having any difficulties, I know that their deans and the provost and our teaching center is reaching out to them to help them. And so if you're having any difficulty, if you can't resolve it with your instructor, then go to the department chair. If the department chair can't resolve it, then go to the dean or the provost. If you don't know who those individuals are, just email me at president@dixie.edu, and I'll just forward that on to the right person immediately, and it will help resolve that. But the key to helping is communicating, communicating where you're at, how you're feeling, how you feel you're doing in the class, talking to that professor, making sure that you're reaching out and sharing the difficulties that you're having. We will resolve your concern, but it's going to have to be a case-by-case, an instructor-instructor position, because not everybody's having the same difficulty. But if you communicate that to us and you do it quickly, so if you have a problem today, communicate today. If you had a problem tomorrow, communicate today. Make sure that you're communicating, because the end of the semester is coming up, and if you don't communicate those issues early on, there's less and less that we can do to help you. But open communication's key. Again, if you don't know who you need to reach out to, just send it to president@dixie.edu. I'll get it to the academic vice president, and they'll respond. We have appreciated the students that have reached out. We tried to respond to you that day, and so if there's any difficulty, please reach out to us.
Hey, thank you so much, President. Dr. Vandermark, back to you. This is a great question from a student. What's the plan for selective programs that didn't graduate students this spring because of COVID-19 shutdowns? Will there be new spots available for students in the fall?
Okay. Well, thank you for that. We will do our best to accommodate all students. We are here to help you and help you succeed as students, and this will be handled on a case-to-case basis. I would recommend that if you are having a problem, you could email me directly, sarah s-a-r-a-h.vandermark via Zinvictor a-n-d-e-r-m-a-r-k@dixie.edu. If you are already in contact, I would recommend that you do reach out to your chair, the dean, or your academic advisor to explain what's happening this spring and not being able to complete your classes, and we will work with you individually to accommodate you for the fall term.
Great. Dean Beatty, back to you. Obviously, with what's going on around the world, there has been an increase of just anxiety and uncertainty, and we're all feeling that to a degree. And so thankfully, we have this great resource on campus, Booth Wellness Center. So if you could walk us through, what are the services that are available even if we find ourselves remote? Is it just gone, or are there still things that we can get from those services that we had before? Walk us through that, please.
Well, thank you. We're certainly not gone. Our providers, our staff in the Booth Wellness Center are amazing, and we're continuing to offer appointments, both medical and emotional and mental health through virtual telehealth services that are just, we're actually having great success during this closure period, and so we want you to continue to reach out if you need that assistance. The number, I want to just give you that number, is 652-7755. That's the easiest way. Someone will always be available, and they'll get right back to you, and we can go ahead and schedule your appointments that way, just like you would traditionally do if you were here on campus. Also, if you visit wellness.dixie.edu, they'll give you a wealth of resources also. It's nice because every Wednesday at noon, they do a wellness check-in through Zoom, so people can touch base and check in and talk with providers and professionals that will give them the services and the help that they need. That is a great service. Another thing that they're doing is helping to teach them continued techniques and strategies for how you all can be successful, because as Dr. Sharp mentioned, we have increased levels of anxiety and some depression that has come about because of the situation we're in. And so just know that, again, we're here to help you. There are trained professionals that are there to assist you. And so if you reach out, again, to 652-7755 or wellness@dixie.edu, wellness.dixie.edu, you'll be able to get the help that you need. They're going to teach you some coping techniques, and even during this time, it's interesting because we've still been doing QPR trainings as well. So if you, you know, faculty and staff and student groups, we can do them through Zoom, and we're getting great reports that they're very, very successful. And so if you belong to one of those organizations and you think that you would benefit, or your club leadership or the group or others that you work with could benefit from being trained on how to assist those who may be struggling with thoughts of suicide or suicidal ideation, please reach out and let our staff provide training for you. So absolutely, to answer the question, we are still here. They're functioning well. Telehealth is available, and so reach out because we want to help you.
Great, thank you so much, Dean Beatty. President, we'd like to talk a little bit about commencement. There's a lot of questions there. We know this is typically and will be against such an exciting time for our students, a crowning moment for them, and so there's some, you know, anxiety but also excitement. It's just been difficult, and so I know we've been working through that the best we can. So I think some of the simple questions, and then there's follow-up questions. In fact, it might be good to even bring in Megan Church. We'll announce her in a moment, but bring her in to help with this. But what is the plan for DSU's 109th commencement ceremony, number one? is the plan for DSU's 109th commencement ceremony, number one? And how did the university reach the decision to hold commencement on December 11th?
Great question. So our commencement, we were planning on December 11th at the end of the fall semester. And this was not an easy decision. I think I can speak on behalf of all the faculty, staff, and administration, and the students. We were very disappointed that we'd have to postpone this, but with the direction of not having mass events and being able to host an event that's safe, we had to postpone this commencement to December 11th. We had a lot of different surveys that went out. We want to thank all those students that responded to those surveys. We consulted the faculty, staff, the deans, conducted a number of different surveys. We wanted to see what we could do to honor our graduates. And in that decision-making, we thought of virtual commencement, and that didn't seem to be as popular as an actual event. And so as we looked at how the coronavirus is progressing here, and not knowing when we could offer that, as we looked at June, that didn't seem possible. We looked at August, we just don't know with the start of school and how that will be. And we looked at homecoming dates, and all the wonderful activities that happen there, that just seemed difficult. And we arrived at December 11th, and we've had great response of those that are RSVPing. We think that's going to be a great event. We'll be able to have those that graduated fall of 2019, spring of 2020, summer of 2020, and fall of 2020, all at this event. We'll be hosting it in the Burns Arena. We won't be in the stadium, because we can't predict what the weather will be, but it'll be a great event. And if we get too many, we'll split it into two ceremonies. But we're really excited about the opportunity to honor these graduates. We hope they will come back. We know it's difficult sometimes to come back, and that's one of the reasons we put it in December. That's a popular travel month, so perhaps if you're coming home, or you're moving, or you're going somewhere different for the holidays, that you can stop and let us honor you as our graduates.
Thank you, President. We know a lot of thought and time has gone into that planning, and every angle has been looked at. We'd like to welcome to the panel the Director of University Events and Promotions, Megan Church. And she's the one that really puts on this event with her team. And so we have some specific housekeeping questions for you, Megan. The student asks, what do I need to do to participate in the December 11th commencement ceremony?
Well, it's actually pretty easy. And as President mentioned, we do want to have as many people come back as possible. So we hope by providing a lot of advance notice, that you'll be able to plan accordingly to join us on December 11th. And it's really easy to do. Last Friday, on April 10th, we sent an email out to our graduates' personal emails and to their Gmail that included an RSVP link. If you haven't seen that email, it's also on Dixie.edu/commencement. So go ahead, click on that link, RSVP, and that's all it takes.
Great, thank you so much. And here's another question that we saw quite a few times. The student asks, are fall 2020 graduates allowed to participate in the December 11th commencement ceremony instead of waiting until spring 2021?
Absolutely, yes. So we welcome any graduates from the fall 2019, spring 2020, summer 2020, and fall 2020 graduating class. And that includes our baccalaureate, associate, and master's graduates.
Okay, great. And one last follow-up question regarding commencement. When will graduates receive or be able to pick up caps and gowns for December 11th commencement ceremony, and how will they get their diplomas?
So I'm actually going to answer those a little bit in reverse. So the first one is your diploma. Your diploma is mailed to you, and that's dependent once your grades are finalized. So after you complete your coursework and your grades are finalized, they'll mail you your diploma. So don't worry, that's coming. And then, to pick up your regalia, right before our commencement ceremony on the 11th of December, we'll host something called the Grad Fair. You'll be able to come in, stop by the alumni house, pick up your caps, gowns, sign up for some alumni opportunities, get a gift, and then reconnect with your class. So have that opportunity. So it'll be right before our graduation ceremony on the 11th, and we'll provide details as they become a little bit more available. And we'll send those to your email, try and get them out through social media, and hopefully get you as informed as we can.
Great. We're very excited for that. Thank you so much, Megan. We're going to shift over to Dr. Vandermark again. So now we have completed the questions that came in early, but we have had students on the program today and have been asking questions. And so we'd like to get to some of those, as many as we have time for. So this, I think, is a great question. The student is asking, now that curriculum has moved online, will DSU be able to offer a better variety of online coursework? Is there a plan in place to create a more robust offering of online content?
The quick answer is yes. We do plan to offer more online. We do have Ryan Hobbs, who runs the Digital and Extended Learning Program here at the university. And he is working with his team and faculty, deans, provost, in order to create more online opportunities for our students moving forward. So that is in the works.
Great. And here's another follow-up for you, Dr. Vandermark. So I think this is a cool question. So, and I'm not sure if you know about the Student Pulse program, but it is something that we've instituted to help students, where instead of them having to come to us, we send them out texts, and we say, how are you doing? Take these surveys. And we kind of measure the pulse of our students. How are they doing? We send them videos, we send them encouragement, those types of things. So the question is, is as a student, we receive Student Pulse, is there a similar system you are using to encourage our professors weekly? So it might not be Student Pulse, but I think this is a great, great question. What are you doing as administration to help encourage our professors and help them get through this difficult time?
That is a great question. And one that's very nice of them to ask that about the professors. I would, one of the things that we have been doing is, we have Navigate, which I know some of the students have used, or sometimes you call it Trails, because it could be an app, is we did reach out to all the professors to ask, you know, how are they doing, and how are their students doing? And what can we do in order to help assist them with any student who may not be participating in their classes, or just kind of, so that was more of a student and professor. But also, Provost La Course, along with all the deans, have been very supportive of their professors and helping. And the chairs really have been helping with remote learning and any tools that we can have. So there's a lot of, and the President has been wonderful with helping all the professors kind of understand what remote learning is, because it has been challenging for some professors. So I think there's been a lot of support. I feel like this is a great community to be a part of. And I think everybody's been really kind of helpful to one another during this challenging time.
We'll have President Williams weigh in on that, too. But I also want to make mention that, just so the faculty do know, if anyone's tuning in, and Dr. Vandermark, you can take this back, they too can opt in to Student Pulse. So one of the students just mentioned that and said, hey, have them opt in. It's been helpful for us, so maybe you could pass that on. And President Williams, would you mind addressing this as well? Just what are we doing to keep staff and faculty going encouraged?
Dr. Vandermark summarized it really well, but I just wanted to point out that our deans have been hosting town hall meetings with the faculty. And so I've heard, I've received many different emails from faculty saying, you know, it's nice to have my dean reaching out and hosting these town hall meetings. I know Provost La Course has done that as well. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that many faculty have reached out to me to say how nice it is to hear from the students and being thanked by the students. As you know, the faculty weren't prepared. When they're not teaching online, they were not told at the beginning of the semester that you will go remote. And so, our faculty have really expressed to me how nice it is when the students reach out and say, thank you, thank you for making this a little bit easier. Thank you for reaching out to me. I've had a number of stories from faculty that students have reached out to their faculty to say, how are you doing? How are you feeling? How are you coping with this? Because our faculty are wonderful. And I think one of the best parts of our university are the people. And we learned that for our first strategic plan, we learned that about our staff and our faculty. But it really makes us feel good when the students recognize that these faculty are doing something that's out of the ordinary, and that they care. And I just want to express my gratitude to the students that are reaching out to the faculty, to saying, thank you, and thank you for making this easier, and thank you for reaching out.
That's great, thanks. It definitely has been a unified effort to kind of help each other during this time. We all have our own challenges, so that's so great. I appreciate whoever the student was who asked that. Thank you so much. All right, we have a question for, it looks like, back to you, Dr. Vandermark. There's just a lot of questions out there as far as academics go. So this is a great question as well. It says, why is Dixie State prioritizing registration for freshman students by blocking out classes? There are several sections of general ED classes that I need as a junior, but are only offered as evening classes because the morning ones are being saved for freshman students. This makes it difficult to work and function as a college student. I know there's a lot of inner, you know, movement with this, and a lot that goes into this. But what could you tell this student to maybe help them?
First, what I would say is, it's a new system that we're doing, and it's not perfect. So if there are courses out there that you're saying, I have to have this class in order to graduate, or just it's, if there's only online options, and I need an evening, these are not blocked that you cannot get into them. So if we have, if we know what course it is, we can give you the CRN number, or we can just put you in it ourselves as advisors. However, it is, there have been some courses where, you know, since it's a learning experience for myself as well, where we did see, oh, okay, there is a course that's only offered online at night, we need more day sections. So really, unawareness of that's going to be an issue for our continuing students, and then we opened up those classes. So it's really something that we can get you into. You will get into it. We don't want to have continuing students not have the opportunity to get into a class that it's not necessarily a priority. So please send what course that is to your academic advisor, and we will put you in it, or we will open up seats for juniors and seniors. So they will be open eventually, just so that you all do know, because there are seats saved for upperclassmen as well. But thank you for that. As, you know, a new system has some kinks that you have to work out during the process.
And this type of feedback helps, right? Helps us to make those right decisions for our students. So thank you so much. Vice President Morris, this question is for you. What is the expected timeline for reopening secondary resources on campus, such as the Human Performance Center, Math Labs, the Fine Art Performance Art Studio? Of course, I'm not surprised Human Performance Center was first, that was a first on their list. It slightly beat out Math Lab, but Math Lab was second. But anyway, if you could just talk about that, they're excited to get back into these facilities and work us through that the best you can.
Sure. I think we're all excited to get back into our old, normal routines. But as far as opening the Human Performance Center and some of the other buildings that you've discussed, we're really dependent upon our federal and our state and our local leaders to kind of tell us when we have the all-clear, and we can kind of go back to life as normal. So there is no hard and fast answer to that question, other than we'll keep you apprised as we get new information. And we're also eager to open those facilities, but we also need to make sure that we ensure your safety and the safety of our employees in getting back to work.
Great, thank you so much. So we would also like to welcome to the panel, we've had some questions come in specifically about scholarships and financial aid and that sort of thing. So we'd like to welcome JD Robertson, who's the Executive Director of Financial Aid and Scholarships. So welcome JD, thank you for waiting in the wings. He's one of our mystery guests. So JD, do you foresee any impacts on financial aid or scholarships for the summer or fall semester as a result of the COVID outbreak?
That's a great question. Currently, we don't foresee any impacts. We are continuing to process financial aid and scholarships for our students for the upcoming summer, and also for our next school year, next fall and next spring. And so currently, there aren't any impacts specifically. But if there are any, if there's anything that comes down through the U.S. Department of Education, we will do everything we can to quickly implement those necessary changes for our students. But currently, there are no major changes that will affect for the federal aid programs, as well as our scholarships here at Dixie State University.
Kind of a follow-up to that. I know there have been a few changes on our end, for example, extending the scholarship deadline for in-state students to, is it June?
June 1st.
So that's just good to remind all the students who are listening in today. Is there anything else like that? I know that was a biggie that they should just be aware of, any changes? Or is everything else pretty much as it was, other than extending that deadline?
Everything has stayed pretty much as it has been in the past. We did extend that, because there's been a lot of changes. We've had a lot of students who have had, you know, they, maybe we're going to take a break from, before they attended college, and they, those plans have changed. And we've had many missionaries from the LDS church return home early, and it's changed a lot of people's lives. And so we want to give, not just them, but every student that has had changes in their lives, that opportunity to come to school and have the opportunity, if they qualified coming out of high school, to be able to receive a scholarship if they're a Utah resident.
Great. And you kind of discussed this, but we had a question come in. Are timelines still the same for financial aid?
Yes. So we have been processing financial aid for this upcoming fall semester since last October. That's when the 2020-21 FAFSA became available. I would just encourage all students to complete that process as early as possible, because there may be some processing time after we receive the FAFSA to be able to get you through, so that we can get you some aid. One thing I do want to point out to all the students who are listening, if you or your family has experienced financial losses, losses of jobs, different things, there are provisions in place where we can look at your current financial situation. Students would have completed the FAFSA for this upcoming year using 2018 tax data, and that's not relevant in the world they're living in today. So if you have had financial losses, and you personally as a student, or your parents, family, please reach out to our office. There are some things that we can do to help you.
Great, that is amazing advice. So thank you so much. We appreciate that, JD, and thank you so much for all the work that you do. We're going to ask a question to Vice President Morris, kind of goes along with this. So one student is asking about the CARES Act money. So they've heard that some of those dollars are for students, and some are for the institution, and how would that work? So as a student out there, what could they expect, and how will that look for us?
Great, great question. Yes, Dixie State will receive money under the CARES Act. In fact, we will receive about $6 million. About half of that, 50% of that, $3 million will go to students. We did put together a committee to look at the CARES Act funds and how to distribute that out to the committee. JD, who just addressed us, is the chair of that committee, and will be finalizing plans to get this money into the hands of students. One of the unique features of the CARES Act is that the $3 million for students isn't based on the FAFSA or the Title IV aid that students are traditionally used to. It's another process entirely, so students can expect more broad distribution of these funds. Then an additional about $3 million in funds was allocated back to help the institution with some of its lost revenues and increased expenditures. So the CARES Act from the federal government is a big help to our institution. We're grateful for them to help us through these rough times.
Great, thank you so much. We'd like to welcome to the panel, we have the Interim Director of the Booth Wellness Center, Tasha McNamee. And there's a question that has come in that I think you would be best to answer. And also, Director, if there's anything you'd just like to add to this, please do. But it says, have we seen any COVID-19 cases on campus, and how is the Booth Wellness Center preparing for cases on campus?
It's a very pertinent question in these times. I can rest assured, let you know that we do not have any positive cases on campus. But if we were to have a positive case, the university would prepare a statement and release that to the community and to the university, so that you would be aware. What we are doing to prepare is we are coordinating with risk management and our campus housing to ensure that we have a place to isolate if a student does have a positive test, that they would have a place to isolate, that food would still be able to be delivered, that all hygiene recommendations would be followed, all the guidelines of our CDC. So recognize that we do have a plan in place that if that, you would be made aware, and that we are prepared to meet any of that, to meet that eventuality.
Great, thank you so much. So much is going on behind the scenes to keep us safe and aware of what's going on, and so much work has gone on. Thank you so much. Dean Beatty, we have a question for you. I think this is another really awesome question from one of our students out there. Is DSUSA looking ahead to plan a luncheon of gratitude to our professors to show student appreciation for keeping us going this semester? If not, are they willing to entertain this idea? And I think, I'm just going to add, this panel and everyone helping today should also be invited.
Well, I think there's going to be a lot of celebration, once we get back to when we can socialize and be ourselves. I haven't heard them speak about that, but I'm certain that they would want to embrace that idea. I know that Penny Mills, your new DSUSA president, is meeting regularly, and will be sworn in here in the next week as the new student body president here. president here. And I will certainly pass along that information, because I'm certain they would love to do that.
Great. Thank you so much. Now, we have another mystery guest who has just joined us. We'd like to welcome to the panel the Vice President of Student Affairs, Peter Gatau. Thank you so much for joining us. A question came in. We feel you are best to answer, Dr. Gatau. Says Dixie State has led a fantastic directive to maintain essential functions on campus instead of a full-fledged shutdown. This has helped immensely our student body, especially international students. As for now, there will be a large number of international students that are unable to return to their homes. What can Dixie State do to assist and support us?
Yeah, I think that's a wonderful question. You know, Dixie State University and the city of St. George are known to be an extremely happy, welcoming, warm place. And I think most international students will tell you that they feel completely embraced and very well-accepted, and we want to continue to do that. So we encourage our DSU community to continue to extend warmth and welcome to all of our international students from across the world. In checking our statistics, our applications, our admissions, we are actually trending very positively in terms of students who continue to apply from all over the world to come to Dixie State. So in spite of COVID-19, we are expecting our numbers to continue to grow. For the students that are here, one of the things that we have continued to do is to maintain a very robust engagement with them. So we know where our students are. We are feeding all our international students with lunch every day, Monday through Friday. And they know that when they come to the fast flow of Holland, there is an email that goes out. They can come and grab their lunch. And as small a gesture as it is, it tells them that we are a community that continues to care. Vice President Morris also talked about the fact that our housing has not shut down. So for the international students that live in campus housing, again, they are there, and housing is available for them. That's also where we have the food pantry. So for students that may find, you know, that they are unable to get some essential groceries, that's a place where they can go and get supplies.
Thank you so much. Well, this has been really great. We have received so much interaction online, and want to thank all of those who have participated virtually or who came in today to help this go forward, this wonderful town hall for students. I just want to throw out, if there's anything else anyone on the panel thinks would be important for students to know that we haven't discussed, and then I'd like to give President Williams the last word. And again, this will be online. Once it's over, you can use the same link to watch this or review any questions that you might have. And again, go to our COVID-19 website that's on Dixie.edu. Most, if not all, of this information is there. And if there's something that's missing on that website, let us know, so we can update it and keep the information current. So we'll just open it up. Dr. Gatau?
Yeah, thank you once again. We are expecting to bring in a very robust freshman class this fall. So, you know, there is life after COVID-19. And we want to encourage all our current students, to encourage their friends in high school, and others who have been thinking about college. We are open. We are taking applications. We are processing applications. If there is anything we can do to help anybody get themselves admitted and processed, so that they can start their classes here in the fall, we want to make sure that we do that. So spread the word. Let people know that the scholarship deadline has been extended to June 1. Let people know that if they don't have their ACT score, we can still work with them. If they're having any trouble getting their transcript, we can still work with them. There is nothing that we will not do to help a prospective DSU student come and join us in the fall.
Great. Thank you. Great advice. Anyone else? Dean Beatty?
Yes. First of all, to all the students, we love you. We miss you. Campus is boring without you. We need you here. So wanted to let you know, you've been receiving, so every Wednesday, I send out the Trail Tracker email, and many of you have commented and responded. And we're putting lots of information that fluctuates from week to week. So that's going to be one of the best places you can go to get up to the information. Just about general things on campus, maybe it doesn't relate directly to the COVID crisis, but other things that are happening. So look for the Trail Tracker to come to your Gmail account every Wednesday. Also, if you want to send an email, deanofstudents@dixie.edu, or go to the deanofstudents.dixie.edu. That would also work. As far as there's the Ask the Dean question, many of you are using that each day. There's a form there you can fill out, and I'll respond to your questions and try to get you the answer that you need. Again, I know the President has made that available as well. I'm just trying to do everything I can to ease his burden a little bit. But obviously, I know many of you, so feel free to reach out. And then finally, I wanted to let you know that I appreciated Dr. Gatau's remarks about the international students. But what has been really interesting to me over the past couple of weeks is we have many, many students who are still here in St. George and on campus who are not international. But for example, we have some students that are from Summit County here in Utah. And we have other students, one I talked to just a couple of days ago, from New York City, and places where the outbreak has had a tremendous impact and changed their lives and altered their dynamic with their family. And even though they wanted to go home, many of you are home now in the safety and security and a familiar environment with your family. And we have many students who were not able to take advantage of that. So I want to encourage you, if you know someone, if you have close connections with someone in your class, maybe that you knew before this whole thing broke out, reach out to them, talk to them, send them an email, find them on social media. Continue to socialize with them, so that they don't feel abandoned and alone. We're continuing to provide the services and do everything we can as an institution. But there's a lot of power in you supporting each other, because I see that all the time, and I appreciate it so much. So if you would do that, that would be really helpful, until we can see you back on our campus again.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, please, Dr. Vandermark.
Yeah, just quickly, I just, I'm hoping that you're all safe. I'm hoping that you're all healthy. I want to say congratulations for pushing and staying on course this semester. We all understand that these are challenging times. I want to thank all of you for understanding the shift that had to occur. And I also wanted to send a thank you out to all the academic advisors who have been working really, really, I guess, a lot of hours, and supporting each student that they can. And also for the students for saying thank you to the professors and to all the administrators and the President for supporting them during this time. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Morris, please.
I think students who have gone home would like to know that our two major construction projects are still continuing as planned. So we're working on the new science building for you to enjoy in the fall of 2021. Jacobson Construction is doing a wonderful job of continuing that project. We actually have cement walls on the east side of that building that are up now, and it's starting to come out of the ground. And we know you'll love that when that day comes. On our student housing project, we are doing the earthwork for it. We're putting in geopiers and foundations and rough plumbing and all of those kinds of things. It's going up as scheduled as well. Leighton Construction is handling that project, and it's going forward. And we expect it to be completed on time in the fall of 2021. So when you do get back to campus, you'll see those buildings coming out of the ground and the excitement they bring.
Great. Thank you so much. Again, thank you so much for participating. We'll have our closing words from President Williams.
Once again, thank you for joining us. We really appreciate you logging on and asking questions. We're very proud of you. And there's not much more I can say than what my colleagues have said here. But we're proud that you're here. We're proud that you're working through some of the issues with this global pandemic. This is not something that any of us planned, but it's something that we're rising together. We're getting through it. As many of you have heard, there's always this Dixie spirit. When I first came to campus, this campus feels different than any other campus I've been on. And that is that spirit of collaboration, that spirit of help that we have, as we see our students rising up in the classroom due to the efforts of their faculty, and then the faculty that are staying strong because of the gratitude that's being expressed by their students. This is that Dixie spirit that you all feel here. And we want you back in the fall. We hope that you'll do everything possible to come back to the fall. If you have any issues today, tomorrow, and in a few weeks, we hope that you'll reach out to us. We have all the resources necessary for you. But we want to see you in the fall and share that Dixie spirit once again. So thanks again for joining us. And if you have continued questions, please send them in to us.